Yeah, as we know that all disasters affect human beings in general but the impact may vary according to the caste, class, region, ethnic group or climate conditions. But all these disasters will have some particular impact on women. This impact actually doubles in the case of a woman who are in the case of women who are in the lower caste or lower class or lower socio-economic category. Already even in the normal situation, women in this category are subjected to double forms of exclusion. On the one hand, they have to suffer from the consequences of belonging to a lower strata or lower caste or lower class backgrounds and on the other hand, being a woman, they have to suffer the gender oppression that generally prevail in society. Now, when the pandemic occurs, the situation becomes worse in the case of any disaster especially in the pan. Of course, we can always ask the question whether the pandemic is the disaster or is it the lockdown which causes disasters in fact? Why we ask this question? Because a lockdown of this level demands the state to effectively address the livelihood requirements of all the segments of population, especially those in vulnerable sections. Of course, this will directly lead to the questions to what extent the governments have effectively handled the situation. We know that Kerala have to a certain extent handled the situation more effectively compared to the other states and at a national level. And in my presentation, what I am saying is that how women at the grassroots level performed a central role in helping or supporting the state government to handle the situation. So the presentation will focus how these women who are otherwise considered as subjects in the normal political socio-economic frameworks have played an essential role during this period of crisis. Why this deserves special mention or special attention? Because we don't usually find women at these grassroots level backgrounds capable of playing such a role. Whether they are usually looked upon as people in the receiving end, receiving end at two levels, receiving states' welfare policies and also at the receiving end of the already existing patriarchal oppressions in the society. However, in this context of pandemic-induced lockdown, we see a drastically different scenario as I said. Many of these women assumed a leadership role in the whole welfare mechanics. In this small presentation, I would like to present women as leaders rather than mere beneficiaries of any development programs or affected persons of pandemic. And we know that this leadership role is not an impact of an overnight scenario. That definitely the result of decades-long empowerment programs and also some other related historical factors. But anyway, I am not going to the historical roots now because of the time constraints. And before I go to the Kerala states and Kerala's experience, let me go to the glance on the international scenario. Of course, we know that at the international level, we can see that pandemic has also been an occasion for revisiting the gender conceptions and stereotypes of leadership. It is already in the limelight that as how countries like New Zealand, Taiwan, Germany, with women leaders have done makes much, much better in countering COVID-19 than others. They have set examples for other countries to follow. A lot of studies have been there to say that the women-led countries could handle coronavirus better than the men-led countries or their men counterparts. The situation in the above-mentioned women-led countries have been compared with that of other male-led countries, the same socio-economic and development profiles, many studies have done that. And the outcomes of unbiased, inclusive and early measures and initiatives of these women leaders seem to be systematically and significantly better. And we have had a lot of the names like Germany's Angelina, Angela Merkel, New Zealand's Jacinta Arden, Denmark's Mity Fradriksson, Bangladesh's Shek Azina, all have better handled the situation compared to the male counterparts. Many, many studies have shown that. And when we come to Kerala also, we know that the health ministers, Health Minister Sri Madhesh K K Shailaja Tietz took an active role in crafting the difference against the pandemic in all phases of its set. Her efforts have been globally appreciated. Earlier also, when there was a health emergency because of Nipper virus outbreak, she could handle the situation very efficiently. And if it was not for the sturdy and early state response to the epidemic under her leadership, Nipper could have grown to alarming proportions, given its records in different parts of the world, including Bangladesh and Singapore. Now also, a department is under her able leadership has been effectively handling the COVID-19 pandemic from the time it has affected Kerala. But my presentation, I am not stopping here. Actually, I am coming to the real grassroots level leaders of Kerala who actually helped the government and helped the leader, the topmost leadership to handle the situation very effectively. Here, I have taken three sections of women workers that is women leaders, I would like to call them as grassroots level leaders or women leaders at the grassroots level. Three sections I have taken, Kudumbasi workers, Anganwadi workers and Asha workers. And in this slide, I just show the the volume of their membership and their the membership and their number of workers. And we know that at Kudumbasi level, there are three, it's a three-tier system. And at the Panjait level, there is a Panjait Low Appex Authority that is called CDS. And at the ward level, there is an elected system that is called ADS. And at the grassroots level, that energy, that is neighborhood group. ADS means area development society, that's the ward level members and CDS that is community development society, that is Appex body of this community organizations. And the main, when in March 2019, sorry, 2020, 2019, when this coronavirus outbreak was reported from China, government of Kerala has taken effective steps, means to be, effective steps to be cautious about this coronavirus. And the government knew that it's the better thing is to make community awareness and to link between community and and the health sector. So this Kudumbasi workers, the government sought the help of Kudumbasi workers, Anganwadi workers and Asha workers from the beginning itself. And when the first outbreak of coronavirus happened, it's the government sought the help of this Kudumbasi workers, Anganwadi workers and Asha workers. Altogether, sixty-six thousand Anganwadi workers are in the field. And the total membership of Kudumbasi is forty-five lakh. That is the sixty percentage of the total households in Kerala. And it's stated that nearly ninety percentage of the poor families are covering under this forty-five lakh NHI families, NHI members. And more than or nearly thirty thousand active Asha workers are also in the field to handle the situation. This is the volume of the members, membership, there is a number of members. And I would like to categorize the role of these women leaders into four. That is first one is awareness campaign and the second thing is the link between community and net, that health networks. And the third, care and safety. The fourth one is livelihood and economic activities. And when we come to the awareness campaign, that was very important because this coronavirus situation, this pandemic situation is completely not familiar to Kerala, not only to Kerala but all world. So awareness was very important. So then, even before the government officially declared the lockdown, NHI special meetings were held out to discuss this topic on March twenty-first and twenty-second. And the aim of this campaign was to inform families through NHI's regarding the care and vigilance here to prevent the spread of this pandemic. Through the special meetings, the families were informed of the importance of social distancing and personal hygiene to prevent the disease. And Kudumbasi and Asha, Anganwadi workers and Asha workers actively engaged in awareness campaigns. The first one is the government declared Break the Chain campaign. And that campaign became success only because of this women's participation. And many parts of the state, Anganwadi workers have done the hand-washing demonstrations and through the NHI meetings, they did the multi-month campaign. And even Kudumbasi did a special campaign on a social distancing, that is social distancing campaign known as Kudagali Lude Samuthiyagala. That is social distancing through umbrella. So I think, I can show some pictures here. And this was a picture from Prishu district. Oru meke oru kudaaka, umbrella for unity. And also, they have done a lot of motivation after when the lockdown started. We know that children and especially elderly and children were very much affected by the mental stress and a lot of stress and mental problems were there. And it was reported all over the state and all over the world. And Kudumbasi, with this aim, Kudumbasi started some motivational campaigns. And the campaigns, when the social distancing and break the chain campaign announced, Kudumbasi started, entered into a new thing, that is the social media networks they use for the things. Kudumbasi created WhatsApp groups at all levels into the three-tier organization and present at present, there are nearly two lakh groups with twenty-two point five lakh members. So that is a new thing for Kudumbasi members that instead of a face-to-face NHI level personal interaction, they have started to spread the messages through the WhatsApp groups. And for this purpose only, they created nearly two lakh WhatsApp groups with twenty-two, nearly twenty-three lakh women members. And they are sending some posters and other positive communication to all through this WhatsApp groups. I would like to share one or two this type of posters, Break the Chain campaign. Omamadhi seyamathinai, namka paniin chumeyi, malarodadutte, dabiragadri kya. Like very beautiful and casting posters, they circulated, eminent NHI members. And this is also part of Break the Chain campaign. Hand washing thing and avoiding social gatherings. A lot of things they have circulated through this, by circulating these posters. And I'm also sharing some of the motivational campaign posters for address to children and also for elderly and for agriculture things for engaging for productive activities. A lot of motivational campaign things they have circulated. And in the first sector, posters focusing on general precautions, care for elderly best and instant. And the second sector posters, what are to do during lockdown, that is positive message that's given in the motivational campaign. And as I said, in the second most important thing is the COVID prevention activities, that is the link between community and health networks. And when the notification regarding the outbreak of the novel strain of coronavirus in Wuhan city of China was received, the Kerala government activated its alert mechanism and emergency response mechanism to prevent an outbreak within the state. At this time, it's the government of Kerala understood that the best solution to point out is to community awareness and community mobilization as strategies to contain COVID-19. And they understood that, the government and all leaders understood that the, there isn't, these community members are the most important influential link between the community and the healthcare system. So as a part of that, government of Kerala formed a rapid response team at ward level. And it's a five-member committee and JPHN will be the convener, ward member will be the then Asha worker, Anganwadi worker and Kudumbasi member. Some apart from that, some political leaders or retired persons or residents association leaders can also be members of this role. But this rapid response team is called as Golden Five by the Malaparan district collector, Adil Abdullah, by seeing the effective works done by the rapid response team at the ward level. They call, it's in the initial stage, Bynard district was, because sometimes was a coronavirus-free district. At that time, collector calls team as rapid response team. And this team follow up the persons in quarantine daily and assess the symptoms status and other medical needs and non-medical needs. This Asha workers also follow up persons in quarantine on daily basis and they assist us in symptomatic status. If a person is quarantined, becomes symptomatic, Asha informs the PSC or CSC who mobilizes the person in quarantine for swab testing for Corona and sometimes they may get treated in the hospital or sometimes they may be observed in the homes. And the second thing is that these three sections supply liters and liters of sanitizers to the district headquarters as well as to the general public also. Sometimes it may be based on the cost, on some prices and sometimes free. And another thing is the Sannathasena thing. Sannathasena, it was created by, that group was created by the government of Kerala. And when the, it can be registered, we can register voluntarily to Sannathasena. But when this Sannathasena was announced, at the initial stage itself, more than sixty thousand Kudumbasi workers joined the as Sannathasena members to work for this effective campaign and COVID prevention activities for voluntarily. And I think this is the most important thing that these women have played because they acted as a link between community and the health network. That was very important for a government to prevent or the coronavirus, the spread of the coronavirus. The next thing is that is care and safety thing. And we know that community kitchens started by Kudumbasi and local bodies were very famous. Even World Bank and UNDP have preceded the community kitchens which were worked during the time of lockdown. As a policy initiative, government of Kerala announced that the state would be hunger-free state or there won't be any person without food. So after Fortnite's operations, community kitchens in Kerala were cooking and distributing. On an average, two-point-five to two-point-eight lakh of food packets a day. That means nearly three lakh food packets were dished out from this community kitchen by these women. And of course, sometimes there may be, as I said, in the case of sanitizer, they were not completely free but for those who are in need, they were free and otherwise they have charged a nominal amount for this food packets. And across more than nearly thousand three hundred community kitchens in four districts, the volunteers were very cautious about maintaining social distancing. Of the total, nearly two hundred kitchens were function under the municipal operation. And the third thing is that government of Kerala announced a food kit to all. And for that also, this effort of women are there. Civil Supplies Department of Government of Kerala has asked the help of Kudumbasi volunteers to prepare grocery kits for eighty-seven lakh families. So nearly eighty-seven lakh families are there as for the ration cards. The sale has been undertaken by the Kudumbasi and nearly six hundred volunteers were engaged in this activity. And they are working for this activity from the ninth April onwards. The packing of grocery kits is being done in nearly sixty warehouses across the state. Then the DHR delivery by Anganwadi. DHR means a take-home ration scheme, that is the food packets which can be issued for children under three point, below three years and pregnant and lactating mothers. Actually, when the normal days, these DHR things are delivered at the Anganwadi centers. But when the lockdown happened, Anganwadi workers delivered the DHR, the doorsteps of all benefices. Then this Anganwadi workers conducted an elderly survey of elderly survey. And that's around forty-five lakh elderly via phone and data was shared with various government departments for follow-up and intervention. And then the psycho-social support. Near more than thousand social support psycho-social workers are there with the WCD Women and Child Department. And that is with the Anganwadi workers. But these psycho-social workers were assigned with health department to support the government department, sorry, health department. And another thing is Snehida. Snehida is Snehida and gender GSLP. The two programs are the Kudumbasi's gender awareness program. Snehida is the system in which we can support the affected women that is harassed if they are women who are mentally or physically harassed by anybody. They can seek the help of Snehida group on GoLan, they will assist the women. That is a normal thing but in this case of lockdown also, Snehida helped us became very active and helped the women very much. And through here, as Snehida and as well as GSLP programs, a lot of online games for NHI women, then grocery distribution type areas and vegetable distribution, Kerala D community, a lot of things have happened. And again, Astra Ya project, that's the project which is implemented by the government of Kerala for the destitute families, that's the poorest women in the poor. And nearly one point five Astra Ya destitute families are supported through this this with the help of resource persons of Kudumbasi and the food kits and all types of help were delivered at their doorsteps by Kudumbasi resource persons. And the fourth thing, which I would like to say that is the most important, I can say that every role played by them are very important. That is the livelihood and economic activity. The government, we know that at the time of lockdown, the economy was completely struck and all the shops and every economic activities were closed. And even a minute activity done by this member very, very important to induce the economy and also the induced livelihood activities of the poor women. Kudumbasi prepared, we know that Chief Minister Sahay Asam, that's a helping hand program of Chief Minister. That's two thousand crore rupees were distributed to the poorest status, poorer people through NHI members, through Kudumbasi. That is at least up to twenty thousand can be taken as loan from Kudumbasi NHI. That is the scheme of Sahay Asam scheme. All these twenty thousand, two thousand crore rupees were distributed through this Kudumbasi NHI. And it was very important that at the time of lockdown, this Sahay Asam Vatthadi was really to help and to increase the bargaining power or the purchasing power of the poor people. And that will automatically induce economic activities all over these states. And when we, when we, when I talked about sanitizers and mask preparation, it's very important that some of the sanitizer and mask distribution was voluntarily and freely. But they have, they could earn a little amount from the sanitizer and mask preparation. Kudumbasi has prepared and sold more than seventy-two lakh cotton masks through around three not six tailoring units. Also, twenty-one micro enterprises have prepared nearly thousand liters of sanitizers as on this in the last week of September two thousand twenty. So when this nearly seventy-five lakh cotton mask means they are, they were earning more than ten crores of rupees till this September. So that was a week, even though it seems to be very small amount, that was very important during the time of this complete lockdown. And during the COVID-19 pandemic, Kudumbasi has started to make face shields, a protective gear that can be used by medical staff engaged in treatment of COVID-19 patients. They could sell nearly ninety-six thousand face shields by the interface. That number has again been increased, I could not collect the latest figure. And the community kitchen, though it was a care thing, I quoted this community kitchens in the previous slide. Here also, I am repeating the thing because the community kitchens have had two roles, doubled roles in the time of lockdown. The first thing is that was a care and safety networks to the poor sections who are not able to take, to have food. And the other hand, community kitchens were a source of income to the Kudumbasi women. So this, in Kerala, nearly thousand five hundred community kitchens were there. And they have started in all Panjais and Insipati with the help of local government institutes. And out of this, some of the Kudumbasi community kitchens were already the budget hotels started by the Kudumbasi. That is budget hotel means food can be taken at rupees twenty per meal or twenty-five per meal to all. That's affordable rate, we can have food from this community kitchens or budget hotels. After this community kitchens, this is the number of budget hotels are on the rise, that is the positive thing happened. And we know that Supply Co. has asked Kudumbasi to supply food cloth, it means not food, cloth bags to distribute this grocery kits. So Kudumbasi has started the production of cloth bags for the same. And nearly twenty-five lakh cloth bags was twenty-five, not twenty-five lakh, twenty crore, two crore cloth bags were prepared and supplied to Supply Co. by Kudumbasi. And after that, this apart from this community kitchens, they have started some takeaway counters in these areas, that is a few hotels near the check post in Kerala. There were very few hotels and the drivers and near the NHTs are faced hurdles in getting enough food. And transportation department has asked Kudumbasi to establish some takeaway counters. That was also a very good, good income support to the Kudumbasi farmers. And the third one is, I started, I told you that social distancing through umbrella. But umbrella making was not only a social distancing method, it was an income generation to Kudumbasi members. Because through this, when the lockdown started and the school was closed, the umbrella making units were really in trouble. And Kudumbasi started this campaign of social distancing and the umbrella making units could earn a little bit because of this umbrella and they could sell more than fifty thousand umbrellas for this campaign and they could earn a very good income also from that umbrella setting. And they have started some floating supermarkets in in some parts, especially in Alapura, they started some floating supermarket. This is a picture of some so- This, this is a picture of some, a picture of floating supermarket in Manpanjaya, in Alapurah district. And like this, a small, small income generation activity they found and they started in many, many parts, but it's not in a large scale, but very small scale things. But actually, we, we could, we could not identify this as a very so to induce the income generation activity or to induce the economic activities of the same. In that way, Kudumbasi members, Asha workers and Angenwadi, Asha workers' role was mainly between the health-related things. They mainly acted as a link between health department and community members regarding the health awareness things and then for follow-up the quarantine things, they actively engaged. But after, beyond that, Angenwadi workers acted as more, more on this care and the safety measures, they more actively engaged. In the case of Kudumbasi, they were in all fields, that's the case of awareness campaigns and in the case of link between community and health networks. And the third of this livelihood and economic activity. And all the, all the activities Kudumbasi workers were very active and even now they are very active. So this is a small presentation and I'm stopping here because it's better to ask, I think, some questions. Because, yeah, I am, before I concluding my small presentation, I may say that actually, I would, in this small presentation, I actually wanted to show that you, you, that is, we have to give tribute to this grassroots level leaders, women leaders at this moment because even though we have gathered some information that Kudumbasi members and female leaders done a lot of things, we have some of the information we have gathered through this process. But through this presentation, I just wanted to consolidate the thing, consolidate the things. And how they played an important role during this this situation of the state. And with this, let me stop and because I'm not going to much details because the time is already too late and it's better to have some small discussions also when if there are any questions or worries or comments. Thank you, thank you very much.